To our team and to help us in our goal there. My commitment to our employees is to make sure that, on my part, I need to make sure they have all the resources, tools, equipment, training, support they need in order to get their job done. And so that's my commitment to Officer Bernal, to his family, that I'll make sure I do that for his career here at the Springville Police Department. And I can say with confidence that we absolutely have the backing of our mayor and our city council to provide all those things for you. So with that, we'd like to swear in Officer Bernal, so if he can come, come up here, stand right here, face the audience here. And raise your right arm to the square and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I will support.
I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the laws and ordinances.
The law and ordinances.
Of the City of Springville.
The City of Springville.
I swear I will.
I swear I will.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Enforce the laws.
Enforce the laws.
Of the United States.
The United States.
The State of Utah.
The State of Utah.
And the City of Springville.
And the City of Springville.
I swear.
I swear.
I will abide.
I will abide.
By the.
By the.
Law enforcement code of ethics.
Law enforcement code of ethics.
And the policies and procedures.
And the policies and procedures.
Of the Springville Police Department.
Of the Springville Police Department.
I take this oath freely.
I take this oath freely.
And promise.
And promise.
That I will discharge.
That I will discharge.
The duties of my profession.
The duties of my profession.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
So help me God. All right, you guys like?
So is this your son, your dad, is that right? Oh, my gosh.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're so appreciative and truly, we do welcome you here in Springville. It's a wonderful place and we do have such, we have the best police force. We're so proud of them. And we have fought for them and I hope that they feel that and they have the support from the city council and the mayor. And some of you know a conversation I had even with the county sheriff in relationship to protecting our people. I'm not afraid of anybody to protect our people. So you just need to know, we're very grateful that you're here. And this young man, he can come anytime he wants and he's won my heart, so he can have anything you want. I mean, you want to go drive a police car? All right, man, here we go. Thank you very much. Would you like to share anything at all or?
Yeah, I'd like to say, just quickly, I just want to thank, thank Jasper for putting their next official meeting voice for those guys.
Great. Very good. All right, we're glad you're here. Thank you very much. All right. All right, we'll enter the more boring part of the meeting, so. I need an approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Hang on.
Oh.
Did we need to discuss appointments later and do we need to add that in an amendment to the motion? I don't know the rules.
There's, at the end, I'll say, is there any other items that need to be brought up and that's when we can do it. We certainly can add it as a formality, if you're comfortable doing it either way.
I just wasn't sure what.
No, no, either way works.
And I've got it on our list of assignments from tonight's meeting, so we'll take care of it.
Well, I think it's in relationship that we're going to talk about the utility board.
Oh, more specifics, okay.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit more specific. So you can, you can address that either way, if it makes sense.
Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll motion that we amend the previous motion to add another item to the agenda, which is the discussion of utility board appointments.
Okay, very good. With that adjustment, a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Now we need to vote on the original motion, I think, if we're getting really technical about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
I'm glad you're here. Me, it's just like, oh, whatever. So we will, the original motion was to approve it as is, so we need, we had a second. So we're going to call for a vote, which hopefully is a no.
No.
Oh.
Which we just did.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Okay, so we're now on the amended motion. I'll need a motion for that.
So we all just?
The, the motion, it's, there's been a motion made and it's been seconded.
Very good. Okay, I'm completely confused, so I'll call for a vote. Those, all right. Those in favor say aye.
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 I apologize for making it complicated.
Logan, it's totally okay. I'm totally all right with it. That's right.
We're glad somebody would pay attention to the rules.
That's right. That's right. That's right. Well, you're going to find out how stupid I really am, so, okay, very good. Okay, we have a, we've approved, okay, very good. Items that we do need to talk about has to do with the utility board, so let's just go right to that. Okay, will that be all right? Because it's a very light agenda.
So did we do the consent? We talked about the agenda, but did we do the consent?
Oh, yes, that's correct. I need to do the consent agenda, thanks, Craig. Okay, let's approve or deny the consent agenda as published. Need a motion?
A motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Yay.
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, very good.
That was Jake after a second.
Okay.
All right, let's talk about the board, yeah.
Okay. Craig, Logan, this is your arena, so why don't you just have a little chat and let's talk about it and then we'll get everybody's opinion in relationship to it, so.
Um, so I did, I did make a list of, of names that I forwarded to you and Craig and some of the staff members. I, I guess, I was under the impression maybe, Craig, that you kind of wanted me to take this and just run with it. I'm obviously a little less familiar with the utility board itself and some of the names and personalities there, so I, I did meet with Jason Miller, our power director. I met with Brad Stapley, our public works director. I had a brief chat with, with Matt, just to kind of get a feel for some of the people there. And I know that with our boards, in, in my mind, I know we want technical experts on, on these boards that can really dig into the details on some of the questions that are going to eventually come before the council, so in some ways, they, they do our homework for us a little bit. I also know that sometimes it's good to have some lay perspectives on there and, you know, when it comes to the utility board, I myself am a bit of a lay person. And so I know that sometimes these boards are really good for educating members of the public who may hold other leadership roles in our community in the future. So then they have kind of this, this knowledge of the technical, you know, quote unquote, boring details of our city in their minds when they're making other decisions. So with all of that in mind, I, I recommended that we reappoint most of the members whose terms are expiring. There are 10 members, five of whose terms are expiring on the 31st, or just expired. So I recommended that we reapprove four of those members. One of them has served, Travis Ball has served for, what I was told, is over 20 years. And we're very, very grateful for his service. But our, our code does currently have term limits in it. Obviously, technically, he hasn't met those limits, but in the spirit of that, I do not recommend his reappointment. And then there were four, four new members of the community that I felt like really had the chops, you know, they're, they're, one of them is a BYU, two of, I'm tripping on words. One of them's a BYU professor, one of them is an engineer. A couple of members are laypeople who I feel like have the, the wherewithal to really dig into the tricky and complicated questions that we'll be wrestling with on that board. So if, if all of the people that I recommended would be reappointed, it would bring our board from 10 members to 14 members, or, no, yeah.
And I, I, I mean, I, I like the names there. I, I don't know that we need to increase the size and straight up, my thought was, I mean, I, I don't have, we, we have plenty of BYU professors on there. I mean, we have two that are, that you've suggested, so I don't know that we need to bring education. And then my personal opinion, and I'd really like to hear Jason, I know Jason's on his way home, but Travis Ball, or, is that his Ball? Yeah. He's a tremendous resource. He's probably, in my opinion, one of the most important assets on that board because of his position at BYU. Or, excuse me, BYU. It feels like BYU Provo, but because of his position at Provo, I would, I would, if he's willing, I would love to have him stay. Because he, he knows what the other hand's doing, so to speak. Not, not that we're competitors, but I think he's valuable. And then the other two, Brad, is that I don't know if we have any water representation, because water is something that probably this year, we're going to need to take another nice hard look at. Now Roland and. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. And that's why, it's like, I don't know that we need to get, I don't need, know that we need to add more BYU boys when we already have Roland and, what's the other guy's name? Yeah, Niall. And because, because they're kind of in the weeds of the water, which I appreciate, so I don't know that we want to mess that up, be it this is the year. So I don't know. What are your guys' thoughts? My, my take was, is that I wanted Brad and Jason and Brandon, those guys to kind of have a thought process of, of who we're putting on, onto the board. And then the others, is just that we have business acumen, because these are, this is the revenue of the city. And sometimes, I mean, not to, I'm a layperson as well, but I, I just want to make sure that we vet them out, that, that we understand that this is a business. It's not, it's not a, you know, just a, a, a community club. It's a business to run the utility board. I mean, there's, that's the livelihood of our city.
Did you talk to Mr. Ball already?
I've not, no.
Okay, just wondering.
Did, is he required to reapply or is his four-year term, well, it can't be up?
Well, it's, it's a two-year.
Yeah, so what, what we did is that people who'd been there, I mean, there's a number of them that have been there for lots and lots of years. But when we did these, this readjustment of the board, is that we reassigned some at two years and some at four years, divided them up, and then figured we'd kind of go through this discussion in two years and then again in four years.
He's on the two-year off the board unless he reapplies. He can reapply for another four years.
And then another four after that.
Yeah.
So I guess, I'm also curious to know our philosophy on, I mean, obviously, he, he is super knowledgeable, super valuable. What is our philosophy on people being on there for literal decades of time? Do we want term limits? Is that something that we want? Or do we want people to kind of be on there for a really long time and have this embodied knowledge that eventually leaves after three or four decades?
Well, the, the reality is, is that institutional knowledge is pretty critical, but having said that, is, is that most boards that I've had experience with, you hate to see institutional knowledge go, but it goes. And it kind of forces those who have not the institutional knowledge to get it and to, to learn it. And that was the intent when Troy and I sat down to create term limits, that we would create term limits and make it so that they couldn't go longer than three terms, three, four-year terms. So the intent was, was to address just what you're talking about, not that we don't appreciate people being there for decades, but it allows new thought, new blood, new opportunities for people. And, and I think that's pretty critical for just the community overall. So just at the 30,000-foot level, that's what it, that's how I would view it. Now, you've got a number of them that are on the, the board and I think just over time, we've got to think through how we best deal with those and, and address those, and I think that's what we're talking about.
So, so I have, I have just a little bit of different perspective on that. So people like Travis Ball and the others that Craig mentioned that do have institutional knowledge, are they, are they training the other people to have that same institutional knowledge? And are they trained now or would it be beneficial to keep them for another four years to help train the newer people so that we not only have, not only have consistency in the rotation, but consistency in the knowledge base?
Specifically with Jason and his new role and Travis, that's probably, I mean, if I had to put my, my white flag up and say, well, wait a minute, I would waive it for Travis because of Jason's need to know and Travis is a huge resource, I think, for Jason.
Yeah.
As well, as, as he's in this. So I, I mean, I, I would say, let's go for him and then the others, Roland and Nolan, we're not Roland and Nolan, Niles, Nolan. I think there, I know Roland, Nolan, those, man, I hope they don't hit me next time I see them, but.
It's on the record.
I, I don't know that, yeah, right? I don't know that water is, is, you know, although, no, it is their forte. They're, they're good at it, aren't they, Brad? Yeah. Yep.
And.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, they've both been on for 10, 10 years probably, but. Yep. Yep. Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because I mean, well, yeah.
Um, and then, sorry, maybe you just mentioned this, but Niall, as he, he has some business experience. He's like a entrepreneurship business professor as well.
That's what he teaches, isn't it? Entrepreneurship. How many do you think we need on this board too? I mean, do we need to increase its size? I'm.
My, my thought with increasing the size was, I didn't want to shake it up too much because I'm new and I don't know these personalities, these, these people and their skills just yet. I didn't want to shake it up too much, but I also did want to bring in some new blood so that we could bring kind of more people up to speed.
Because both Ken Conde and Kellen Hire are brand new, like less than two years new, right? Am I right on that? Brad? I know Ken's really, really new and Kellen, Kellen, well, Kellen was on water. He wasn't even on power. And he's a sparky, so I mean, that's a, that's a new guy.
And neither of those, their, their terms expire in two years, so Kellen and Ken.
Oh, but I'm just saying, as far as the newness on the committee, meaning, do we need 13? I don't think we need 13, straight up. I, 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 the larger it gets, the harder it is to make decisions sometimes.
And I think, let me just speak to the size. I'm going to do it at 30,000 foot again.
Yeah.
The intent of when Troy and I sat down and went through this is, the intent was to make them smaller groups. That's why I had such a hard time with the par committee being 18, but it's worked effect.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Oh, sorry. Because usually smaller groups are, are more effective, if you will, but the par has certainly been completely opposite to, to what I thought could possibly be done. So in, in your transition, that sort of thing, the intent, I think, is to keep it at, what did we say, 10 to 12, Troy? Is that what it was?
I think it's 11 to 13.
Was it? But, but the.
Unless there's approval from the mayor.
Yeah, and I, I guess what I'm saying is, is that I'm not afraid to raise it if you go through this transition and need to go through a, a higher number to do the transition. So I'm not, I'm not too worried about it. But that, the intent was to keep the groups a little bit smaller, to make them more functioning, if you will. So I've been on big boards where you just sit there and then I've been smaller where you know you need to say something and that's, it's much more effective. But that's just personal experience.
And.
Okay.
And, um, I have very limited experience on this board so far. I've only had two meetings. But the ones I've been to, we've had like seven or eight people each time, so we usually have a, a few members missing. And that's part of why I thought maybe we could expand this, because then if we're missing a few members, we still have a, a large enough board that I think can catch a lot of the details without bogging things down.
We, we had a, we had a similar discussion to this in par board last time, as to whether or not we wanted to let it pare itself down or maintain the 17. The 17 has been very effective for the par board. I don't know if that would work on the utility board. I'm not familiar enough with it, but the 17 has been very effective. And what we've noticed is that almost always, there's somebody missing and we want to make sure that we have a quorum so that we can vote on the recommendations that are brought forth. So that's kind of where the par board is sitting right now. We're going to come back next month with more ideas about the size of the board. But that's kind of where we left it.
You guys are going up to 23, is that right?
No. 17 is really good.
But I, but for me, I would vote for a smaller board as well.
Well, the other reason I would say is, is that when this gets large, people think it's okay to miss.
That's the problem.
And then, then you don't have that consistency and, and, and you, you might get hidden agendas that way.
We barely had enough to form a quorum at the last meeting.
And that's okay, because then now they, now they have to be responsible. They have to participate. Where, 17, 18.
Oh, yeah, so, so it will fill in for me. That's much, much the attitude I feel is, is what's happening right now.
And I think you'll see that more in business than you will. So.
Jake, oh, sorry, Craig.
No, no, I'm, I was.
Jake's thoughts?
I don't have super strong thoughts, but I appreciate Logan's thought on it. I'd be okay with 13.
During the transition and that sort of thing. Well, what I would recommend doing is, let's, since we, we'll take kind of a pause on this, let you and Craig sit down and have a discussion maybe with the superintendents and, and come up with some thought process, at least a game plan for us. I think you've heard our thoughts and just maybe incorporate some of those and you, you know the intent of what we're doing, not only size, but expertise and that sort of thing, and just come up with some recommendations between the two of you and the five of you.
I, I really think would be ideal would be just to have Jason and Brad, anybody, anybody else, do you think Jake would want to come through that, Brad? I don't know. What do you think? And just have a quick 30-minute meeting just to go over each of them. I know, it's just another meeting that you just love. Same here. I just, I can't wait to come see you. When does Jason get back? Because it'd be nice to have this wrapped up on the 19th. Oh, so he'd be back. Maybe, I mean, if we could just do it, shoot, we'd do it before work session next Tuesday. Would that work, you think? Logan, just.
Works for me, yeah.
Just, just do it at 5 o'clock next, next Thursday. You all right with that, Brad? Yeah, just me, me, Logan, you and Jason. Just sit and just go, go through each one, because if we keep Travis, that's going to put him at 14, right?
Yeah, and I'm just let you guys kind of do your maneuvering and talking and that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Let's do that.
All right.
But now we've got these guys' opinion as well, because the other thing too is, I want, I wanted to know what the rest of the council, because the board, in theory, will make the decisions for us. So when we get here, we're just like, well, they, they vetted it, we're done.
That's. No, you should have an odd number. Yeah, the intent's to have an odd number so that you don't have ties. Unless you do it like my dad at our house and he says, sure, all five of you kids have a vote and I'm seven votes, so you can vote any way you want. That's the way he did it. Okay, sounds good. Other items that we need to go through, because we have a closed session we need to do? Anything? Mindy, Mike? Logan? Okay, Craig?
Yes, there is, there's something that I'm getting tagged for all the time. Google Fi in weird areas, specifically Colop Circle.
Not having it?
Yeah. Does anybody know where I live? But there's, there's weird areas in Springville that Google Fi just has not. Do you know anything about it, Brad, or any? Well, Colop Circle, because that's where I live and they're not there, and so all of my neighbors hit me, but I guess there's some other neighborhoods up by Eves and that area where they just haven't gone down some certain road. I, I didn't bring my.
Yeah, if, if we have the numbers or names, either Public Works or.
Because they're still in town, aren't they? Are they still here or they?
They are. Yeah, they're still here and they're still working and, and, I mean, they only, they committed to us to examine each area and, and they said they would get to, you know, certainly the high 90%, but I had one up on 2100 East, similar question.
Maybe that's it, because it's up there by where Robert's.
Yeah, and they went partway down that road and then just stopped. Anyway, if you let us know, either Public Works or Administration can reach out.
When people text me and say, hey, you're our Google Fi expert.
Just shoot it this way and we'll reach directly out to their representative and get their engineering answer to that of, it's still coming, or this is the problem, or whatever, we can get an answer.
Colop Circle could be because it's not a city street.
But Clint signed the paperwork, because I, I rammed it all the way through, so I know that the church has approved it, but, because that is probably the excuse, but it's like, well.
Right. The last one I had, I got a whole bunch of technical engineering jargon back and I, I think the end result answer was, it just, the guy stopped like 200 feet short. And so in this one, it very well could be, it's on our build list, but it's on our catch-up list and we're here, here and here.
Because of that, because when they were blowing through.
Right.
Block, or the, the A, whatever you call that.
So we can, we can get their answer. And I know the person I was working with had tried several times their helpline, but they're just getting some college student that's like, yeah, you're not in my zone.
That's how I, I called today and that's pretty much out.
Yeah.
So how many, how many of us are on it?
I am.
Really? So I mean, it's, everybody, what, does anybody know what the pickup rate is in?
No, they refused to tell, tell me, but I can say that we said, hey, the, the necessary rate to kind of break even is 35%. They just laughed. So they're definitely above that.
I, I'd say they got to be in the 70s, 60s or so. Just based on this little straw pool we did right there, so.
Yeah.
That shows you the frustration with Comcast.
Well, so I can get it in my backyard, but because we've, but none of my neighbors can, because I go all the way through, but, yeah, it's, anyhow.
We just.
Now, if anybody's watching this, neighbors, I ask.
We just, we just barely got connected. I mean, it's been in the neighborhood for a year.
Yeah.
But they, they haven't turned it on and connected it.
That's exactly what Homer said.
But I just got hooked up last week, so.
Okay.
All right, I'm done.
Jake?
Sorry, guys.
It's okay. Jake, do you have anything that you?
No.
Okay, Troy?
Really, I'll, I'm just calling your attention. What, the reason the mayor is asking this is you have mayor, council and administrative reports at the bottom of your agenda, both in the work session and in the regular council meeting. It's been there for decades. The purpose for that, and at different times, we've used it to better effect than others. This is an opportunity to have kind of the discussions you were just having, but more importantly, you're all serving on things like SUVPS and the solid waste and SUMO, and I just named all the utility ones, but what par board and, and other things that you're going to separate meetings, this is your opportunity to kind of share back to the council what's happening in those so that everybody's up to speed, like, hey, there's a big bonding issue coming at SUVPS, so don't be surprised in the budget if that budget goes way up. So you're, you're hearing different things in your meetings. This is the time when the mayor calls for that, for you to share those things and have discussion.
That's good clarification. Thank you.
By the way, there's a big bonding issue coming up at SUVPS.
There is.
It's going to be expensive for sure, yeah.
Hey, speaking of another one, those FCU LMNOPs ones, but did, are they going to change the name of the South Utah Valley Solid Waste District?
Yes, they're rebranding as Nexa.
Okay, so I'm just wondering when they're going to change their name, because I, I'm off of that. I, you're on it now, but.
So this is a classic Terry, though, I've got to say. They, they aren't rebranding. They are rebranding.
It's a little confusing.
It's still SUVSWD. They're not changing the name. They're not changing the logo, but they've stuck Nexa on everything, because that's who they are. And I've, I've sent him a note and I said, Terry, we've got some experience here in a successive rollout. I'm happy to help and give you some direction and guidance. And he said, thanks, and I've never heard from him since.
Well, I, I just didn't, did it, did it come up at the last meeting?
The branding itself?
Yeah.
Not really, no.
All right, I'm, I'm going to hit him up, because I mean, I, I was a big fan of, let's get rid of that and let's get something that people, so, all right, that's.
It's a little easier, that's not quite the mouthful.
Yeah. I'm, I still wasn't a fan of the acronym. I wanted a name, but we didn't get that. Dry Creek Transfer Station.
Like Phantom. Okay.
It does have a meaning.
Something about next generation.
Is it okay if I bring something up that I just got a text on?
Go ahead, yep.
So the shooting range, I was just texted to be sure to remind everybody that, at least from what I'm hearing, that the police have the police range up at the Garth Kilpak Range because of the indoor range at the senior center.
Again, we're not necessarily looking to shut it down.
No, I, no, I get that, yeah, and, and we, I think we all agreed on that. I just wanted to throw that out there so the council was aware of the history there and, and why the police actually have a range up there, so.
Yeah, and I think it's important for those who are here, as well as those people that are watching online, is John briefed me this morning in relationship to, and the insurance company, because of the inherent challenges that are there at the center. And they're asking us, they're, they're requesting that we close it. But they're asking not to where we have to, but we think that it's prudent for us to close it while we get an assessment of what it would take to bring it to a grade that the insurance company would feel comfortable. And we have some experts that are going to be coming, so the intent is to, to close it temporarily so that we find out exactly what we need to do, so.
Yes.
Does that sound right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We have closed session, so I need a motion on property. We have closed session, so I need a motion on property. I need a motion to go to closed session and then to adjourn, so.
I motion that we adjourn this meeting into a closed session for property.
Very good. Have a motion? Second? The roll call vote? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.